With that then, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order 10:01 AM. And this is a special meeting of the Finance Committee. Our predominant action today is to review the preliminary budget. So let's go ahead and get a quorum established. We have all committee members available here. So we have a full committee forum. And I do not have a chairman's report today. We can move on to public comment for any comment that is other than what we have on our agenda today. So, Ms. Dotson, is there anyone that had indicated?
Do not have any public comment at this time? No, I don't have any public comment at this time.
Okay, fine. Thank you. We can move on to the consent agenda then. This is just for the meeting minutes for May 13th and May 28th. As it's consent agenda, assuming that there would be no issues unless I hear from anyone like your motion for accepting the meeting minutes for 13 and 28, May 13th and April 28th.
So I moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous, 5-0. Moving on to regular business then, what I would like to suggest if it's okay with the other committee members is that I'd like to move the budget review up to item A. Just to exchange with item B because we do have members of the staff here and I don't want to keep them from their assigned duties, as it were, any longer than necessary. So if that's okay with you, I'd like to reconfigure that. Are there any objections? Okay. Then on to regular business, we'll review and discuss the FY 2020, 2021 preliminary budget and provide recommendations to the board. And I'm assuming, Ms. Duffield, that you'll be introducing this unless GM Wyngold, you had something to do with the introduction?
Cindy, did you do the consent agenda yet?
Yes.
Did they do a roll call vote?
Was there a vote?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, we missed that.
Oh.
Okay, so we're on to preliminary budget. So I'll make a few comments open up for the committee. So SAP is recommending that the Finance Committee review and discuss the FY 2020 slash 2021 preliminary budget and provide recommendations to the Board of Directors. We put together consolidated preliminary budget and I'll have Pam talk more about purpose of the preliminary budget. But we've got all the department heads assembled today. But I wanted to make some preliminary overall comments on this because this is my first go around with this process. And my generally, I think we're in a great trajectory with a lot of momentum. Thanks generally to most everybody on this committee. You put a lot of processes and procedures in place and controls that enabled us to get where we are. And the board through a lot of actions, both those that were recommended from this committee and as well as from their own board, put some issues in place that, you know, such as the rate increases that are enabling us to do things finally. And you can see that in the preliminary budget going from a lot of red a couple of years ago into the black. And so my philosophy going into this, working with the department heads was I cut a lot out of the budget to leave us some room to operate going into the next fiscal year. That was purposely done from, from my perspective with them to enable us to some room to maneuver. And there's a couple of thoughts you should keep in mind as you look through this. As I mentioned, great momentum coming into where we are. But some of the, some of the black that you see at the end of the fiscal year here is the result of us stopping all discretionary spending back in late February with the onset of the coronavirus. We didn't know where we were going to go. We didn't know what the impact was going to be. And so I'm a conservative kind of person. And so I directed all department heads unless it was an emergency or we had to do something from a maintenance perspective to stop all, all our spending. So there are things that we haven't done that that are a result of, or which actually ended, ended us or helped us to get to that surplus. So that's one issue. The other is while we funded the full PG&E IGA costs, which are a little over $600,000 in this budget, we don't, we didn't have any guidance from PG&E when developing this budget. So we just met for workshop one earlier this week. And we actually got some figures for the main items that PG&E is addressing. That total was $17 million. Now, keep in mind that this will be over a 10-year period. But the fact that we have budget surpluses, for example, in water of a half a million, we didn't include any meter replacement in that. We didn't include any of the $6 million for the IGA in that budget. And the reason for that is we didn't want to pin budget items on a specific, specific program when we don't know where we can get grants from. So we have a lot of homework to do for the PG&E project to understand what grants are available for what projects. Some of those grants are, are sharing, cost sharing. So we don't know yet a lot of information. So that was another reason why I left some maneuver room in the budgets. Because we will refine that budget going into the year. So that was, that was my primary thinking. The secondary thought was on, on the reserves. We have, we have some board guidance there, but our reserves are essentially depleted. And, you know, one of the things, if not the only thing that keeps me up at night is the thought that we are, you know, one small catastrophe away from financial disaster. And what I mean by that is one, one major breakdown somewhere and we're, we're in trouble. So, you know, again, my, my conservative side of me says build up some safety net there for those things while we go ahead and, and work through the other issues over the longer term. That's all I, I wanted to add at this point, and I'll turn it over to Pam for her discussion a little bit about what we're doing with this preliminary budget and how that differs from the.
Pam, I apologize for interrupting at this point. I was remiss in that before we started the discussion on the budget, I rightfully should have called for public comment. And I will touch base with Ms. Dotson. I believe that we had some public comment items and I don't see anyone requesting anything at this time. But Haley, could you please advise on those comments that people have submitted?
I do have one public comment to read and it is from Kitty Connolly from the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve Executive Director. And the comment is Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve strongly supports CCSD's approval of the entire budget made by the Facilities and Resources Department as requested. The proposed expenditures would fulfill CCSD's obligations pursuant to the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve's deed to conservation easement and CCSD's additional duty to maintain the community's infrastructure. In particular, the requested increase for homeless camp cleanup, weed abatement and tree removal would enhance public safety. FFRP deeply appreciates CCSD's work to maintain, preserve and protect the ranch. It is a unique and valuable asset to Cambria, those who live here and are visitors. CCSD's ongoing efforts to work with FFRP to enhance the health and safety of the ranch's urban forests and to keep the trail system open to visitors throughout the current national health emergency are particularly praiseworthy. Just ask any of the hundreds of visitors to the ranch every day of the just past Memorial Day weekend. The returns the ranch brings to Cambria far outweigh the proposed expenditures. The ranch brings economic benefit to Cambria through tourism and enhanced property values. For example, more than 30% of today's real estate listings for Cambria mention proximity and accessibility to the ranch as selling points. The flow of Cambria's visitors to the ranch reflects its increasing reputation as a major attraction to the central coast. With these factors in mind, each of the requested budget items should be approved. Sincerely, Kitty Connolly. And then I also have Elizabeth Benhausen that would like to make a public comment.
All right, Ms. Ben, Ms. Benhausen?
Elizabeth, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Stidell. And thank you Haley for reminding me to unmute myself. I should pay attention to that less often maybe. I'd like you to look just at one issue. I have not had anywhere time to look at this budget. But I would like you to look at page eight of your agenda and page 13. And you will see that they're related even though you have not gotten to what used to be before the budget, before you switched it here. But if you would look at page, you would look at page eight, you will see that water and wastewater are listed there as funds. If you look at page 13, you will see what I think is a typo, but I want to ask a different, another question. In the middle of page 13, it says consolidated enterprise fund summary. Summary and detail schedules for each enterprise fund budget. Then it lists water fund, SWF operations fund and SWF capital fund. Then a subheading there is consolidated water fund summary. And a subheading of SWF capital fund is wastewater fund. I simply don't understand that. I'd like a little clarity there, please, because it doesn't make too much sense. But I want additionally now, having listened to General Manager Wygold, I want to thank him for his comments because I did not know that because of COVID, we had stopped all spending, if I quote you accurately, sir, and therefore have surplus now. And I was not aware, although I should perhaps have been, that we have essentially depleted our reserves. I hope that you as a finance, a standing committee on finance of the CCSD board will, as you always do, give your careful attention to these matters because this makes me a bit worried about the district financially. And I don't know what all the spending was that you stopped, et cetera. So I'm, I'm looking forward to attending orally to your meeting today. And thank you very much for letting me comment as always.
Thank you. Something I will ask of the, of the participants to the meeting, the attendees. We're probably, as, as the committee goes into the review of the budget data, we will probably go through quite a bit of conversation. And it's possible that questions that may come to mind for you will end up being addressed as we progress through our conversation. So what I'm going to do is request that the board be able to, or the committee be able to have their conversation relative to the budget. And then I later will call for questions that the attendees may have. But my, my choice is that it's not an immediate interactive process because the committee has a tremendous amount of work that it needs to get through. And as I mentioned, I'd like to be able to have the staff members who are here still be able to get back to the work that they need to do also. So Ms. Duffield, with that being said, I apologize. And can you please initiate the agenda item for us?
Sure. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. So as Mr. Wygold has already said, this is the preliminary budget, the first review of it before it goes to the board. Purpose of the preliminary budget, if you recall.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry Pam, we're having difficulty hearing you.
And we'll move it closer. How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll start over. So good morning.
Good morning.
So the purpose of the preliminary budget is to create the spending plan for the district for the fiscal year 2021. So in doing that, we have to determine our revenues or any revenue streams that we have coming in and determine the expenses that will be going out. So that is the plan that we have presented to you today. First of all, I'd like to talk about the budget policy. So your committee adopted, took to the board a budget policy. And then that free part, we have outlined all the requirements of that policy and how they have been met or not met through the process. So the one item to pay attention to is item B for calendaring. I did note in there that we didn't meet that requirement just because in our policy that was supposed, the preliminary budget was supposed to come to your board in early May. So that is the reason it stated in there that that policy item was not met. And just moving forward, I don't know if there's anything specifically that you want to highlight and talk about. And we can go back to that if you would like. I'm sorry Ted has his hand up.
Yeah, I'd just like to say as, unfortunately, the author of that budget policy. It may be time to look at revisions. It was, it was put together at a time when, when we really didn't have any useful guidance about how the budgeting process was, was to proceed. And so you know, I took, I worked a little bit with Amanda, but she, she ended up having some, some other issues to deal with. So it, it was pretty much my take on, on how things might proceed without having a good operational understanding of the, of the CCD, CCD, C, CSD's work. And so, so, you know, I appreciate that you are being pretty rigorous comparing what you're doing to the policy. But let's, let's consider adding a future agenda item to begin addressing the practicalities of, of that work.
Thank you Ted. I, I agree. And we should put that out as a future budget item. And I think part of what's reflected here also has to do with being at the front end of that process maturing. You're absolutely right. Because for instance, even the capital improvement plans discussion. We've become so much more adept at what the whole CIP is and what those review mechanisms are and exchange of information between R and I in finance that the, the need for meeting in that way that it's described in the, in the, the budget policy right now probably has shifted some as well as some other things. So thank you. So the question, question is, do you want to give a summary information going through the individual elements? Or do you just want to entertain direct questions from the committee?
I would like to give a quick summary if nobody minds.
Absolutely.
Overall. So following the budget policy, and by the way Ted, I, I don't have a problem following it. I think it's a really good document. And I think it lays out our process fairly well. Of course, we should, I think it's a great idea that we should review it in the future. So since we do have, you know, worksheet down, we kind of have a different system. The one item we probably do need to review is item C because we've kind of mediated from that mid-year budget review to quarterly. So that's definitely one area that we could for sure update to reflect what our current practice has been over the last year to go forward. So as far as the budget schedules, we've attached colorful pages that you see that, you know, at this time were developed last year. And this is supposed to kind of give you some highlights of, you know, by detail, you know, the key items to zero in on. So we have the consolidated general fund summary, which means it rolls up every department in the general fund into one worksheet. So it's a snapshot. So you don't have to do a lot of math adding up. You know, what's the deficit in fire or the surplus in fire as compared to facilities and pros as compared to admin? So that rolls all the budgets together into one summary. And in addition to that, you will see a overall summary page in the fire fund. You will also see fire detail line items and facilities and resources, pros and administration, you will see the same thing. At the end of the administration fund, you will also see the administrative overhead calculations. And then moving on to the enterprise funds, you're going to see a similar document. You're going to see an overall consolidated worksheet, one page with all of the enterprise funds in summary. You will also see water fund, SWF operating fund and SWF capital fund. And then you will see a wastewater fund summary and detail pages as well. Some other schedules that we've attached is the salary schedule and the position allocation listing. If you'll remember back from last year, I think previous, the budget had a headcount or maybe it was like incorporated on the org chart. And it wasn't a clear listing. So we have taken that document and expanded it like we did in last fiscal year. And that is actually a position allocation listing and it shows you each position in the district. And when it, how it was funded during, at the budget approval in August of last year and how that's changed in the new budget that you're reviewing today. You will also see the org chart. You will see the current fiscal year's org chart as the positions and the org chart stands today. And then you will also see a proposed org chart for any changes in staffing that are requested as part of the budget proposal. Capital project improvement listing is also included. And that is the most current listing that has been, the staff has been working with the resource and infrastructure committee to further refine that list and make it a more friendly and readable document. They've been working on that at various meetings throughout the last fiscal year to kind of move that document from what was adopted in the budget last year in our first round of creating a meaningful CIP list with, you know, priority categories listed on there to the document that you're seeing in the budget package today. And the last item that you'll see is the department line item budget request. So we did this for the first time for the committee and the board last year and everybody seemed to think it was a very useful document. And this basically outlines by department, by fund, every budget request that's come in and if it is funded in whole or if it was partially funded. So it's kind of a good document to see that not every request has been approved and put into the budget. And we'll be walking through some of those requests as we talk through each of the different budgets. So now I'm going to move into the actual worksheets which start on page 17. So overall, in the general fund, keeping in mind that the general fund includes the fire department, facilities and resources, parks, rec and open space and administration. And you will see that overall, the operating deficit that is projected is $17,000 change that would need to come from general fund reserves. So that's a combination. Again, if you're looking at the middle of the page in the gray area, you'll see which departments have surplus and which departments have deficit. So basically our interest and any of our franchise fees that reside within the administrative fund will cover the deficits for the most part for fire and facilities. So then moving forward to the actual fire department budget overview, that's on page 19. Plan for the fire department for fiscal year 2021. It includes property tax revenue. The property tax overall, the county has given us an increase on the unsecured component of the property taxes going at 5%. That doesn't mean property taxes as a whole go at 5% because the unsecured portion of the property tax calculation is a small part. So the amount that you're seeing there is reflective of what the county has provided us going into 2021 fiscal year. And then in salaries and wages, that will include the recently adopted IAFM O U. And there were a series of raises that were included in that M O U. And so the next raise kicks in for the IAF members in January of 2020, or sorry, 2021. And that'll be a 3.5% increase. That is programmed into their salaries budget along with the cost of the increase in the PERS unfunded liability for the safety members and the additional contribution that's required by the employer. The only other item in salaries and wages that was an increase is the projected increase of medical. And this is across every single department and fund. Is we don't have our PERS rates for medical at this time. So we opted to go with a 9% increase similar to what we did last year. And we will hope that that is adequate to offset the cost. If not, then we'll be addressing that through the year as those costs are known. As far as services and supplies, if you look at page, the services and supplies for the fire department start on page 22. But a good list to have handy while we're discussing these items begins on page 90. So that is our overall departmental request pages, our line item budget pages. So as you can see from page 90, the fire department had over $600,000 in budget requests. Not all of those are encompassing in services and supplies. But only $45,000 of those requests could be funded in the fiscal year. So it's important to note that they did request additional staffing, but at this point in time, we are unable to approve those requests. The majority of the things that were approved in the fire department's line item request were mostly in services and supply accounts. were mostly in services and supply accounts. And some required flow testing that they have to do on their breathing equipment when they go into a fire. So, those are some significant things. The other significant thing in capital outlay is that we have base two of the radio project. So, if you recall in the current fiscal year, the fire department had applied for a grant to a federal slash state agency and they did not get that grant. So, mid-year board action, the board approved doing the radio purchase in a two-year phased approach. This current fiscal year, they received a grant from the county of San Luis Obispo Emergency Services. And then the district had funded about 11,000 of that grant offset with reserves. And going into 2021, there's the second phase of that, which will be fully funded by a grant. So, you will see the $30,000 grant offset by the cost of that capital improvement equipment. So, moving on to facilities. Facilities begins on page 28. That is their overview summary on page 28. So, facilities has some, also, they had a position request, a maintenance worker requested, but we could not fund that request. And the trade-off to that is that we put some temporary service help into the operations budget. So, we're hoping that that will help through the peak times of mowing and tree trimming that happens in the spring of each year, the spring and in the fall. And we're hoping that will be a stopgap for the facilities manager and staff. In addition to that, there's some additional items budgeted for the homeless policy that's currently being worked on by the policy committee. So, in that policy, there's a requirement that the district store the personal belongings of each of the individuals that are being, you know, cleared from the encampments. So, in order to do that, there is a couple of line items in there. There is a shelter that's in there or cover for a trailer. There's a purchase of a trailer. And there's also increased funding to clear those areas of the homeless. In their capital improvement budget for FNR, there is a purchase of a truck. They have a truck that's failing that may be failing during this fiscal year. I don't know if it's going to make it through. So, they need to get that truck replaced. And we've assumed that that would be financed. So, you will see the offsetting revenue. You'll see loan proceeds offsetting in the amount of 40,000, just like the cost of the expenditure. And we're hoping to plan that with the conclusion of the debt service of one of their trucks that will be paid off in the mid of the fiscal year. So, we're hoping to time that maybe in the spring to purchase that new vehicle. The vets hall, we have several requests for items for the vets hall. And you will see all of those requests on page 90. And those requests could not be funded at this point. So, you know, maybe throughout the fiscal year, if you know, as more items are known or reserves are more solidified, maybe that's something that could be amended through the year to get some of those items funded. Moving on to pros, which begins on page... Sorry, it begins on page 36. You know, we pretty much have the same budget level in pros that we, you know, submit every year. We have usually about $20,000 in a line item for the pros budget. So, this year, we have the skate park design. We reduced that a little bit so we could fund the community park design of phase one and also put a little bit of money out there for professional service for grant writing. So, if the skate park or the park design begins, Carlos is thinking that there might be some grant opportunities out there to help fund those projects. So, we've put a little bit of money in the budget for that process. And then moving on to administration. Administration begins on page 41. So, in administration, we requested in the personnel area to increase the part-time clerical assistant that the board approved back in December to a full-time person. And our rationale with that is to help the other departments that don't really have a segregated administrative staff. So, that would be like the fire department and facilities and resources. They don't have anyone in their departments to help them with administrative tasks. So, and we're at capacity in administration. So, you know, we sometimes can help them, but sometimes we're at capacity and we can't offer them help as well. So, we're asking to have that increased to a full-time position. And then that way, we could support their operations and take some relief off the fire chief from doing administrative tasks and also take some relief off of the facilities manager for some administrative tasks.
So, Ms. Duffield?
Yes.
That, that part-time position that was approved at 24 hours a week. So, is this, this is considered a 40-hour week position that's being looked at?
That's correct.
And had you gotten any specific feedback from either facilities or from the fire department about the kinds of specific work that they need to have support in?
Well, they have various administrative tasks that they do on a daily basis. If you, I don't know if you recall or not, but at one point in time, the fire department had their own administrative assistant at the fire department. That was years ago. It was probably, I think the chief said it was maybe 10 years ago. So, you know, there's people that come into their lobby, they do fire review plans. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that they do. They do medical reports. There's, you know, a great number of administrative things that they do on a daily basis that, you know, the fire staff have to split amongst them or it defaults to the fire chief. So, so there's a lot of things.
The fire chief's on the call here, if you, if you want to ask him to chime in.
You're muted. Mindy, you're muted.
I was trying to keep the dings from my computer and bring into the, into the frame. Chief, yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. Can you, what, can you ask specifically what it is you're, what you're looking for? I'm happy to chime in to what extent you need.
Well, we were discussing the potential addition of another, for a full-time person to be shared out for administrative support duties. And I guess I was just asking what kinds of duties those, those were with the fire department. And Ms. Duffield had indicated that there were any number of report requirements that you have that you could use assistance in as well as being able to handle people from the community coming to the fire department.
Yeah, I think Pam did a great job in answering the majority of that question. Just as a real quick history, we did have a full-time administrative assistant here, maybe as much as 10 years ago, along with a prevention officer. And both of those were not filled at a cost-saving measure back a number of years ago. And we've been able to re-secure them. But now, as they're talking about moving forward, one of the line item requests I had was to bring that administrative assistant back if possible. And that unfortunately is not allowed in the budget at this time. However, if there was some kind of task that they were specifically able to do, there is regular reporting that needs to be done to both the county and state level. A lot of that reporting is required for grant availability and authorization. It's one of the exclusionary processes. If, if we aren't reporting that data, we're automatically excluded from some of those grant possibilities. So, a lot of those duties fall to us. Essentially, since that position is not filled, our door is permanently closed at this point. We don't have the ability to have people just walk in because the fire, the firefighters on a regular basis have tasks that take them, they're busy throughout the entire day. So, it's not like they sit here waiting for somebody to come to the door. So, it does limit the capability of people just walking in for the purpose of questions and answers. That means there's a lot more phone calls, there's a lot more contacts by email. A lot of that is like right now is related to the fire hazard free reduction program. So, it might take a little while to get back to those people. Having somebody in that capacity be able to do a question and answer and schedule those kinds of things would be critically important. Since I'm currently working without a prevention officer, all those tasks fall to me as well. That means a lot of the scheduling components regarding rough end inspections, sprinkler inspections, final inspections for, for building that's going on in the community, all the code enforcement related things that I have to do, those all have to be scheduled on my end. That would be a huge help having that kind of stuff. We have a growing mountains of paperwork right here that I don't have the, the time and effort to, to go and file. We do as we have time. A lot of that desperately needs to be digitized, so it's more easily accessible, especially when public records requests come in. And then there's always the, there's numerous meetings that, that I am partake in as, as part of my position as the fire chief that represent this agency throughout the county. It's frequently a component of the other chiefs, that their administrative assistants participate in a lot of those meetings. And so, when we go to those, they actually take on the role of taking minutes for those types of meetings and helping out in more of a global capacity across the entire board. There, so in, in short, there is no lack of work for a full-time administrative assistant here. We, we would definitely benefit from that. And even if that unfortunately is only in a part-time capacity, it would still help.
Chief, thank you. That definitely helped to give some perspective to the kind of support. Cheryl, can you unmute, please?
Mute. Bill, Linda DeClerc was the last one to work there and I believe she was full-time. My question to you, was your salary subsidized because this was a cut? Did you receive her salary to do all her work or? Maybe I'm not, you know, saying it right, but was your salary adjusted for that position?
No, it's not. It really, there's, and you have to remember that there's two different jobs. There's the administrative assistant, which was a full-time position. And then there was also the full-time prevention officer that essentially acted as the fire marshal for the community. Both of those have been absorbed into my position right now without being able to fill them, again, in that continuing cost-saving measure. We would benefit very much from that. What it does mean, it just, in all frank honesty, it really, it adds a lot of extra work to my day and my week. But it's, it's all part of the job and we, we do what we can to get it done. But yes, we would definitely benefit from having those. And I think being a, I'm not saying it's not being thorough now, but I would definitely like to be able to spend more time in some of the more technical aspects of plan review and, and site visits and, and all the inspections that occur. And we do spend a lot of time doing that, but it does detract from other things we need to be getting done. But no, there was no subsidy that came over because of the cost savings.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Ms. Duffield?
Marvin?
Yeah, it looks like the cost of that is $180,000. Is, in, in, in view of our austerity efforts, is it possible that this could be maintained at a part-time position, even a couple of part-time positions that, that might come in a little less than that?
I'm not sure what you're looking at, but if you look at page 90, to increase that position from part-time to full-time is a cost of 44,000. I don't know where you're getting 180,000.
I'm, I'm looking at, at the administrative department, uses of funds, personnel services. We're going from a million 168, 1920 to a proposed budget of a million 349, so $180,000 difference. Perhaps it's not all that particular.
Correct.
Position, is that what you're saying?
Right. So, you have PERS in there, you have PERS unfunded liability, you have the SEIU increases to the administrative staff that was approved by the board. You know, the medical increase, there's many other factors in there besides that. So, it is not a cost of 180,000 to have a full-time clerk. It definitely is not. Okay.
So, any other questions from anyone? Okay, Ms. Duffield?
Okay, so I'll go ahead and conclude with the admin division or the admin department. So, a couple of other things, we have some technology improvements that we're requesting in the budget. One of them is to continue having the Zoom presentations. You know, we were unsure how long the shelter at home is going to be in place. So, we've included about $5,000 to continue the Zoom presentations for the entire fiscal year. Again, you know, we don't really know how long this is going to last. So, we could have overstated that a little bit, but at least it's in our budget request. And the other item is just some small items that we're requesting for the Tyler implementation since that should be happening sometime in the spring of 2021. They have recommended that we purchase a few small dollar items to enhance our efficiency of our cash sharing operation. So, we do have those listed as a budget request as well. And it's just highlighted as cash sharing hardware.
A question I do have in the administration area. I mean, it's, it's obvious that the insurance premiums just seem to ratchet up on a pretty significant rate on a year-over-year basis. I know that we're limited in who we access for that service, being a special district. But do you have any indication from them what is driving that kind of increase?
Well, they, you know, you have to keep in mind, we've purchased several, we've gotten rid of several old pieces of equipment during the fiscal year. And we purchased new pieces of equipment. So, every time we do that, that's going to increase our insurance rate. Any claim we have against the district will increase our rates. And then it's just the overall cost of providing the insurance as a whole. There are some incentives that we've taken advantage of. They offer, SDRMA has a training portal called Target Solutions. And that is available to all of the board members and all of staff. And any kind of training that we can do through their portal, whether it's, you know, safety-related training, you know, whatnot, that provides us discounts. So, we try to take advantage of that. And I think this year, we had about, what was it, John, like 5,000? I don't know, maybe like $5,000 in discounts that we were able to achieve. Sounds like a small amount, but it's better than nothing that they do offer us some sort of discounts for training. And then we do also get a 5% discount because we bundle our workers' compensation policy with them as well as our property and liability insurance. So, both of those items, we do get a little bit of discount for bundling it.
That training component, yeah, I think that we could probably take better advantage of that and earn those discounts. I know it's not something that I think of or go to, to peruse on a regular basis. So, I think a reminder of that to, not only to staff, but to board members of its availability and what it does for us would be of value.
Yeah, that is not a program that we've, across the board as CCSD, always, you know, really zeroed in on. We've been discussing it more and more through the, every week. We've been discussing it more and more through the every-week managers meeting. And we're working together as staff to get those trainings out to our staff and utilize that system work, because all the training, it's free to us and it's online. So there's no travel costs, there's no overnight stays, you know, all that kind of thing that happens when you have to send a staff member away for any kind of training. So the more training that we can do through that avenue, it's a cost savings to us overall. So I think that's about all I have to wrap up administration and the general fund as a whole. I'd like to pause for a minute and ask if there's any questions on the general fund as a whole before I move on to the enterprise funds. No? Okay.
On the insurance, is that, that liability insurance, does that include the fire department and the use and all that? I mean, is it auto too? Is it all combined?
It's everything. It's every property that we own, streetlights. And then it is also every vehicle that we own as well. So the fire trucks, the new vector truck that we purchased, you know, our water plant, our wastewater plants, includes everything.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the enterprise funds. Oh, sorry, do you want to stop and talk about the allocation of administrative overhead?
I don't know that there are any questions to it. I guess what I would like to put out to the committee that would sit outside of what we're doing for this budget process, but something that we may want to review on a regular basis as well as potentially a policy we've put into place is what that allocation is and what those alignments represent. That's something that I think was initially, this particular allocation was established a couple of years ago. And I don't know that there's anything that would indicate that the approach or the identification of the four application types should change. But I think just for consistency and for good, good planning and good financial view that we probably should look at what that allocation basis is on a semi-regular basis, maybe every other budget period or something.
So that is a component of the budget policy. It is actually item F of the budget policy. So it is, it would be a good time in reviewing the budget policy to have that review of overhead. And is that still the desired way to allocate the administrative overhead in the categories that we allocated in? So it would just be a great time to review that as well. So the enterprise funds start on page 51. So I just want to recap really quick what is happening in the current fiscal year. So you will see that in column I. So in the current fiscal year, as you know, in the middle of March, the shelter-at-home order went into place. And our revenue stream was a little uncertain for commercial and for, you know, the commercial lodging and the commercial restaurants and tourism through our community. So during the last finance committee meeting, when we talked about the rates, we did have the first billing cycle since that has happened, we had those numbers available to us. So in the projected revenue stream for 1920, I've taken those projections and I've doubled that. So we do have a little bit of revenue reduction that's projected because I'm assuming the next billing cycle, you know, here we are, the beginning of June, and the shelter-at-home order is still virtually in place. You know, things are reopening, but still not to normal capacity. So I've assumed that same revenue stream happening for the May-June billing cycle. So then moving on into the new fiscal year. Overall, the water fund, we'll just start with the water fund. The water fund does have an overall surplus projected in the tune of like $800,000. Again, we have a lot of unknown capital things that are brewing right now. So we're projecting that will change throughout the year, but at this point, that would be our budget proposal. So in the water fund, SWF fund and the wastewater fund, we've had some overall staffing changes. So in the current fiscal year, there were two key positions or three key positions in water, wastewater and SWF that were consolidated into two positions. So that does have an effect. It has a little bit of an increased effect in the water fund, but it has a decreasing effect in the wastewater, or I'm sorry, in the SWF fund because we have consolidated two managers into one manager. So you will see that reflected in the salaries of those different funds. Over and above that, there is a request to reorganize the positions in the enterprise funds. There's a request to reclassify a management analyst to a program manager. And that position is split equally between the three different funds. And then there's also a request that came out of a board meeting recently to take a limited-term position that was an administrative technician that's been working on water conservation items and turn that position into a full-time position. So we've also made that change in the budget. And again, that position is split across each fund equally as well. So moving on to water specifically, and they start, the water fund starts on page 53. Overall, their request in the water fund, we talked about the salary changes already. They're asking for, the most significant line item is the annual tank maintenance and rehab line item. So currently, they don't have, they have a line item for the annual inspections that have to occur. You know, there's an inspection that has to happen internal to the tank every five years. And they put those on a rotating cycle, so they do, one of the tanks they inspect each year. But they don't have any current budget that sits out there for any kind of repairs that need to be done as a result of those inspections and any kind of painting or rehabilitation that needs to happen. So you will see a new item request for $46,000, and that is to, you know, do that annual maintenance on the tanks. Another key item is the capital improvement request that we have. Again, we talked about the IGA already, and we're fully funding that. Oh, sorry, the IGA isn't funded here, somebody swat, sorry. The IGA could be funded here when we get the project allocations worked out, so that'll be forthcoming. So the truck that's being requested was actually in this year's budget, and they did not have a chance to procure it and purchase it. So they're actually just moving it into next year's budget. So that's why you see the footnote to it saying that it was moved from 1920 into 2021. The meter replacement program, we're just doing an augmentation to that budget. We've planned on rolling that budget forward because they're still in process of selecting a vendor and getting cost estimates from those vendors. The SCADA, again, that is just the phase two, so that'll augment the SCADA budget as well. New request for a water conservation database is there, and a new request to begin the design and permitting for the rodeo grounds pump station. And that seems to be most of the requests in the water fund. Moving on to SWF.
Pam, I'm not sure who would be available to address this part. Well, of course, Ray would be, but the rodeo grounds pump station, I'd like to get a little bit more orientation to that, please.
Ray is online, and he can answer that.
Morning, Ray.
Good morning. Good morning, Cindy. So your question about the rodeo grounds pump station specifically is why that project is on there? Is that the question?
Or what it entails, what its purpose is?
Yeah, so the current pump station or booster station that's there now is in, is within the 100-year floodplain. And the proposed project for that is to, and actually, it's not just because it's in the floodplain, but the piping and the pumps need some rehab. And this would be a good opportunity to actually move it out of the floodplain, you know, probably 50 yards past the dog park area. That's the gist of that project.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to SWF operations and capital. Operations begins on page 61. So again, this budget would include the allocation of the administrative tech to being taken from limited term to full-time, and then also the reclass of the management analyst to a program manager. The other significant item in the expenditure category for this fund is that they're requesting $50,000 for a baseline biological monitoring person, or a service contract. So this would be new to the budget, it's not something that they've done before. And they're also asking for some small amounts of funding for ground maintenance and for chemicals. We're trying to isolate our chemical costs a little bit. So, you know, we might be adding a new line item throughout all the budgets through the year to kind of isolate chemicals, because right now they just get wrapped up into like a departmental operating supply. So it's really hard to tell, you know, what is the cost of chemicals across all the funds. So we're going to work on making that a little bit more transparent moving on into the new year. For SWF capital, which is on page, where does it start? It starts on page 67. There are no new requests for the new fiscal year. We currently have contracts underway for permitting and other services. And so those amounts would just roll forward into the new fiscal year. And again, there's no new budget requests for that fund. So if you don't have, if you have any questions, I'll stop for a minute again and address any questions in the water and SWF.
May I ask? Pam?
Sure.
Can I ask you a question? There's no money put into reserves.
There's no money put into reserves for where?
I didn't see any money put into reserves for the water and wastewater fund.
So in SWF on page 66,
Yes.
there is $180,000 being designated from reserves on line 188.
Okay.
And that is for the two-month operations for the SWF, providing they operate the plant.
So that is. Wait, wait, wait. So that money will, so you're saying the two months that they're planned to operate it, they're going to charge the rate payers and they're going to put that money into reserves? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry, a little confused.
The rate structure does not work that way anymore. Remember, when the Prop 218 was adopted in October of 2018, that rate structure went away that you're thinking of. So the cost of operating the plant for two months in the fiscal year is already included in the rates that you pay on a bimonthly basis. That's already loaded into the rates you pay. So regardless if we operate, you know, for two months or three months, that is not going to be a separate billing to the customers like the rate structure was in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so moving on to the wastewater fund. Sure.
Yes, just comment. I'm going to follow up on what Cheryl was asking because there isn't a provision for reserves other than the SWF. And yet we do have the surplus. And so as I understand it, we still have a lot of work to do between this preliminary budget and the final budget, which would be in August. And the, and part of that work is to determine what should be set aside for reserve versus what should be spent, for instance, on the IGA for the water, water fund, and perhaps identifying other capital projects that we need to embark on. So the, this surplus will go somewhere. And reserves is potentially one of the places that it would go, I think. Is that correct, Pam?
That's correct. If you look at the bottom of the worksheet, when we look at the overall fund, maybe you should just, let's see, let's go back a few pages, sorry. If you look at page 51, a new zero to the very last, next to last row, row 68, those would be ending reserves. Oh, sorry, that's the consolidated version. It would be line 58, not 68, which would be your water. So those would be the reserves that would go into the water fund. 523 would be water, and 132,000, 132,000 would be SWF reserves. And so that definitely will be a discussion going forward with the board on, you know, what they want to do with those reserves, knowing that, you know, potential projects that are coming down the pike that are just kind of unknown at this point. My thought is it probably will be a first quarter budget report discussion. I don't know if we'll have all the answers by the end of July in order to publish the final budget, because the final budget is required at the second board meeting in August, because it has to be adopted before September 1st of 2020. So I'm just not sure if we'll have all those answers by then to be able to make some real concrete decisions. But hopefully, by the first quarter reporting, we could make some budget adjustments if necessary.
I think the really positive thing here is that there's been enough conservatism in the approach to this budget, both in the expenditure to get us to this point and with the approach in putting together the budget for 2021, that the potential for these reserves exists, and it also gives us the flexibility of have, being able to address what, whatever actions need to take place as we gather more information related to the IGA or any of the other major activities that the CCSD has ahead of it in the next, certainly in the next year. So I think it's, I think it's a positive position, but you're right. We, as Ted had stated, it's getting downline far enough in the process and knowing where we are for the statement of our actuals through the fiscal year end for 1920 to know what the exact number will be, so we can go forward working with that.
Yeah, just remember, you know, our plan is what we know today. You know, and it's just an estimate at a point in time. So, you know, having these, the quarterly reports with the board helps us revise that plan through the fiscal year as new and. as new information is known, you know, because things are not going to match the plan for the year. That's just inevitable. Things are going to change up or down. So, you know, it's good to have those conversations at the end of every quarter just so that everybody's on the same page and we can make adjustments to the budget as necessary. Okay, are we ready to move on to wastewater? Okay, so for wastewater, you'll notice that and wastewater is starting on page 72. You'll notice that at the end of the fiscal year, which is column I that I'm referring to and line 44, they have a large surplus that's projected of 443,000. But if you also notice in in column K on the same line, they have a deficit projected for 2021. So the proposal is that we're going to be reprogramming those reserves for use in the fiscal year. We would use the majority of those. Again, looking at fiscal year 1920, the same revenue stream projections have been assumed that we would have those reduced revenues coming in in March, April and May, June. As what we saw in reality, I estimated for May, for March, April, I made that same assumption that we would have that revenue reduction in May, June. We won't know the actuals for May, June, we bill somewhere close to the 10th of July. So at the time of the budget hearing on, I think it's the 18th of June, we still won't have the information on what really happened in the, you know, the next billing cycle. We will not have that date at that point. So we made those provisions for 1920 for their revenue reduction. Moving into fiscal year 2021. We made the same assumptions for the salaries as we did in the water and SWF funds of the admin tech two and the management analyst to a program manager. There's some items that they're requesting, they're requesting to continue with painting of the office building. In the current fiscal year, they had money to start the painting process at the plant. And this money that's budgeted here is to continue that project. They're also requesting to replace the roof. The roof is in bad state of affairs, so they need to get working on that very soon to get that replaced. And then as far as the capital improvement projects, again, we're budgeting the remainder of the $688,000 that's due for the design work to PG&E for the IGA project. And then there's two additional projects that are also being requested related to the overall PG&E project, which is on the CIP list as ECM 7, which is the electrical panel upgrade. And then ECM item eight, which a portion of that is being requested to also replace the switchgear. That whole project is budgeted, I think around 400,000. And they're requesting for a component to be added. Two items that we didn't allow to move forward were the next two items on the request list, which is the John Deere tractor and the van to replace the video camera system. We didn't let those items move forward because they are not currently on the CIP list and have not been routed through the committees properly. So we denied those requests at this point. They may, you know, move along and be requested as a budget adjustments throughout the year if the need still exists. But, you know, that is the reason why we didn't fund those.
Pam, I'm going to interject something here because I, that being said, I think that that's another indication of something that a lot of the planning that's been put into place for the financial activities is reflecting by the fact that you were able to identify that those weren't on the CIP lists. It wasn't something that was automatically or seriously considered for inclusion to the budget because it had just been identified that there's a process to make sure that there isn't cost creep on the things that we're involved in, that there's a tracking process that goes on and that we're making conscious decisions rather than reactive decisions about how we're spending our money.
Right. And just because of the whole, you know, rate structure and, you know, the Bartles well study and what was put into place. You know, we've done a lot of work over the last year with competence of the committees and competence with the community. And, you know, it's important that we keep these things transparent. And, you know, if they are items, if they are valid items that are needed, then we need to run those through the committees and just not have it show up on the budget and nobody know where, well, where did that come from? So, you know, we we kind of want to go through the process and be a little more transparent with our capital request. So you might see that in the future, but at this point, it was eliminated from the budget request. So I think that is about all I have. Let me flip through the attachments and see if there's anything. I don't think there's anything specific on the attachments to call out. So that's about all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question Pam. The wastewater, we're showing a deficit of 395,000 for the proposed budget. In that budget, we're showing roughly $100,000 of payments on the interfund loan. Why would we be making that payment and inflating the deficit for this fund?
So when I first started out talking about the wastewater fund, I noted that there is a large surplus that's projected for fiscal year 1920. And that surplus will be moved into fiscal year 2021 to offset that deficit.
So that brings up the next question on all of the schedules. There are ending reserves perhaps for 1920, 1920, but there's nothing that shows a beginning reserve for the following year. Where is that surplus accounted for in the in the following year?
So keep in mind, these spreadsheets were developed for the first time last year. So we elected in our discussions early on to not put a beginning balance. But going into the final budget, you will see those beginning balances reflected. You will not see that in the general fund. You'll only see it on the general fund on the total sheet because we don't separate the different departments within the general fund. But you will see beginning balances appear on the final budget head going into 2021. You'll see that happen in August when those numbers are known.
And and I believe a good part of that is until we get to the end of our fiscal year and know what our total expenditures are, we we aren't in a position of getting a finite number. Is that a, is that a true statement Pam?
Correct, yeah. You know, this time it's just our best estimate of where the year is going to end. So, you know, we kind of try to base it on the trend that's happened through the year so far. And, you know, we're either going to be on the mark or we're going to be off. So, you know, we got a 50/50 chance of being right on the marker. But I mean, that's a really good question because the reserves are important. And that's been, you know, a lot of discussion that we've had over the past year at the finance committee and at the board meetings on our reserves and documenting what those reserves are. So there will be an additional schedule that will be included in the report to the board in our preliminary budget as well as our final budget, and that is the reserve schedule. I think I talked about that on the narrative or on the staff report that says that we're in process of creating that document and there will be an estimated reserve in all the different funds.
Okay, thank you.
You'll see them in a couple of weeks.
And I I would say that it's further complicated by the fact that we still don't have audited financials for the year ending, what, 2019 or the year ending 2020. And so the the actual reserve balances will end up being subject to adjustment based on the audit.
Correct. So just just keep in mind that 2019, 20 is not past due at this point. We're still current. Making a point.
Yeah.
But we will have those. So when we did the estimated reserve scheduled during last budget cycle, we started with the most current audited year and we went forward and just documented it was estimated. So I can update that because we do have one year that's been done. The 17, 18 year has been completed, so I do have those ending balances. And I'm working on updating that schedule.
So I do note that we have a participant who has a question. But first, I just wanted to come back to the committee members to see if there are any other questions or observations they wanted to make before we start taking public comment. Cheryl?
I noticed that they're going through it. I noticed Pam that there's some some items, well, there's I that are that have been new requests. Is, are those wish lists, are they just basically going to happen? There's items in here that say new request, new request.
So are you talking about the colored worksheets?
Yes.
Okay, so on the colored worksheets, we tried to be transparent to let, to let the finance committee know and also staff, because we can track it, and the board. So like, because if we just inflate that line item, it is not clear what that request is for. So you will see anything that's new or kind of a significant change. You will see that listed on its own line, existing budget line. And then you will also see that recorded starting with page 90. Because that includes what the request was. So anything in that funded column where it says your 2021 funded amount, 90, those are the items that you're going to see on the new request lines throughout the colored pages in the budget schedules.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
One other question, and this goes back to page 29. Under other sources of funds, line 38, loan proceeds 40,000. Where where is that coming from? This is facilities and resources?
So if you fast forward a little bit to the budget schedule itself. So page 29, you have the loan proceeds with 40,000. And then if you fast forward to page 33. Sorry, it's page 32. You will see that that's for the purchase of a truck. And that's on line 159. So it's anticipated that in the spring of 2021, we will replace a 1999 F-150 truck. And it's assumed that that truck would be financed. So we show the expense going out and we show the loan proceeds.
Okay.
And then in future budget years, or maybe as a budget adjustment during the fiscal year 2021, we might need to program debt service for that truck. But it just depends who we finance with. If it's due on an annual basis or if it's a monthly payment that will be due for debt service. It's just to regard the expense and the offsetting the loan proceeds.
Okay, so let's see.
So Ted, I think you had a question.
Yeah, it's it's actually more observation than question. I think if if we look at the request schedules on page 90 and 91, we see the impact of the Prop 218 clearly addressing the majority of the things that have been requested. And and, you know, I think the the requests are are in line with all of the plans that we've put together, starting with the CIP lists, going back more than two years. And so I, you know, that's a, that's really pretty good news when when you look at at the budget and just kind of look at it from a distance. The side that doesn't look like such good news is the number of unfulfilled line items requested in the general fund. And you know, that's a, you know, there there are a whole host of things that that leads you to think about. Going back to Marvin's question about why would we be repaying the interfund loans on the one hand? Well, part of the reason to repay interfund loans is that the general fund has been very supportive of the enterprises, but is is actually not keeping up with the demands of of the district and the community. And so, you know, so I I'm just pointing that out as as a concern as we go forward. We've got a lot of property management that has to be done, including dealing with homeless people. We have a request to put one more firefighter on on each shift so that we have a full complement of four on a truck when if it has to roll to a fire emergency. And and so these things are are areas that as a community, we should probably be thoughtful about and you know, it it becomes opportunity over time for for some potential course changes.
Any other questions before I entertain question from the participants?
Cindy, you need to unmute yourself.
Dr. Bettinhausen, I believe you have a question on the chance that it's still in frame of reference for the amount of time you've had to wait. Thank you.
No, it's been a very interesting discussion and I thank you very much, Chairperson Stidell. And I commend you also for your comment that there should be at least in every other budget review of the admin allocation question, admin cost allocation question. Because as you might guess, I I won't sing like I have for the board lately, 99 bottles of beer on the wall, but my same theme comes up again. I would like you to look very quickly, and this will not be long, at pages 59, 61 and 67, where you will see within the water fund and the two SWF funds, the specification about monies for the admin allocation. And I want to raise just one big question that I'd like some clarification on. Were I to go to the budgets in the website now, just checking things, and I ask myself the question, what are the expenditures for SWF? And I just looked at the Water Fund 39, Department 25, and Water Fund 40, Department 30, at the SWF funds, in other words, I would see absolutely no expenditure listed for administrative cost allocation. But if I go to the Water Fund 11, I do see 418,381 But if I go to the Water Fund 11, I do see $418,381, which is the actual charge then for administrative cost allocation for SWF. So if I go to SWF, I can see revenues for SWF, but I will not see in those particular budgets the expenditure of almost half a million dollars. And so I'm assuming that right now it is the rates for the regular water rates that are covering the SWF administrative cost allocation of 418,000 plus. Now, I know that you have talked about this before, but I want to raise it again because I think that the district is not disclosing very forthrightly the expenditures for SWF in this regard. So that if we look at the expenditures that are listed in the SWF budgets, we then really have to add $418,000 plus for the administrative cost allocation. I'm not asking that you solve this problem right now, but I'm I alert you that I will bring this also to the board when it looks at the budget because I think this is a major policy question and a very key element of what has been bureaucratically called across the world these days transparency. And I will write it out so that I am not quite as opaque as I might have been just now. But I thank you very kindly for your work. I think that for for citizens of Cambria to do what you members of the finance committee are doing is simply laudable. And I praise you for your public service in this regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bettinhausen. I see no other participants' request to speak. And are there any additional questions or observations from any of the committee members? Mr. Siegler?
I just want to add a what for me will be a final comment that when we compare the work that has been done to prepare this budget and the the detail and understanding and and participant of all of the various operating parts of the organization to to make it a really useful process. Compare that to where it was several years ago. We have come a long, long way. And Pam, you in particular are to be congratulated for excellent work and we Elizabeth was giving a kudo to the committee. Well, I I think the committee owes that kudo really to you. And so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second.
And to your staff. I know that they've they've put in tremendous tremendous hours and everything just to keep things going in addition to having to feed the beast, as it were, for the processes, not only related to the budget, but for the rates implementation and everything else. So it's, yeah, significant contribution to the district and the community. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome. It's a team effort. All the managers were very heavily involved in the process. And they've all been involved in the process through the year and in learning their budgets and being more in tune with their budgets and managing them throughout the year. So it's it's definitely a whole team effort.
Excellent. So that being said, with the other staff members here, is there anything that any of the attending staff members want to make comment to or observation as far as the budget's concerned? No, okay. That being said, then, I guess what we have is the opportunity to put forward a motion regarding the recommendation of the preliminary budget to the board. And I guess depending on what that motion is, I don't know if the committee feels that there are any conditions or specifics to the recommendation or just a recommendation to move forward in total. So should we have any conversation in that regard first or just ask for a motion? I guess I'd just.
As like to, I'd like to move that the committee recommends to the board the plans and associated budget for the fiscal year 2021. I guess that's a motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mary. So moving on to a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, unanimous. All right, that's a unanimous vote for the motion as stated by Mr. Siegler. And that recommendation will be carried forward to the board. Thank you all very much for the time and effort that it took to make this review and to go over the details of the information so that we could satisfy ourselves and have the conversation and be able to do that with the public and feel comfortable about moving the information forward to the board also. Thank you all very much for that. What I will do then is go ahead and move on to the balance of the agenda. And let's see, I have stacks and stacks of paper. I need to get back to where it all started. Okay. So moving on to the next regular business item, which had been a is discussion regarding the interfund loan policy. Now, this has been carried forward for a period of time on our agenda for new business. And frankly, I don't know whether it's so much the idea of a review of the interfund loan policy as it was maybe the desire for a conversation on the interfund loans themselves. So yeah, GMY Gold or Ms. Duffield, do either of you have an observation in this other than?
I believe the committee requested this to be brought back to be reviewed. I think it was, I don't know if it was the last, the last committee meeting.
I'm afraid this has been carried for three or four, I think.
Yeah, just to, I think they just, everybody wanted to like maybe revisit it. I I don't recall.
Okay, thank you. So as far as the committee's concerned, is there anyone who felt strongly about revisiting it or for any particular reason? Ted?
I I think the policy has already been adopted. So first of all, I don't think the item should be reviewing the policy. It should be actually reviewing the interfund loans to the extent that we have something to review. I believe the interfund loans with the general fund to the waste treatment operation have been documented. And so we have some understanding of that. The interfund loan between the general fund and the water fund or some part of the water fund is still somewhat in question, I think. And the so so pending actually getting to some sort of audited numbers to to deal with, we're we're probably ahead of ourselves to be considering anything related to that. And then I I think the final thing is that over time, we've had questions coming up about whether interest should be forgiven, whether some portion of the loans should be forgiven, et cetera, and whether we have any recommendations to make to the board with respect to that. But, you know, I I think we we probably need a little more information than we're we're working with at the present time to to consider those those kinds of things. So my suggestion right now is that we probably table this and and bring it back if if and when we have something more concrete to talk about.
That's kind of my inclination also, and probably to rephrase it in terms of discussing interfund loans, period, rather than just the policy itself. So unless there are any objections, we'll go ahead and table this to a date not certain for for the conversation, but certainly not in this context of reviewing the policy itself. And is everyone comfortable with that? Okay. Thank you then. We will move on to item C, review and discuss grants for electric vehicle charging stations. And I believe Jim Wygold, you have you had the information for discussion in that regard.
Yes, so in for agenda item 4C, staff is recommending that the finance committee review and discuss two grant applications submitted for electric vehicle charging stations and and make a recommend, prove recommendations to the board. So first of all, me the culpa on my part. So one of the things that I did not realize is that any grant that requires a match has to go before the finance committee and the board. So we're doing this a little after the horse has left the barn in one of these two grant. And it has to do with trying to get in under a grant deadline. So that doesn't make it right, but I am have begun to revisit the grant policy that the board implemented in 2015 in that regard because we're going to have a whole slew of grant opportunities, hopefully, as part of the PG&E IGA project. And the way this this system works, that any match has to go before two committees or a committee and a board before we even apply, it's just not going to be efficient for us going forward. So so basically, what we've done is we applied for two grants for electric vehicle charging stations. One is 100% match and one would be for a 50% match. We're we're told that we look pretty good for the 50% match and we're trying to run the ground, how things look for the 100% match. But the bottom line is, when I came came to Cambria into this job almost a year ago, I recognized that we have no charging stations in town. We're trying to be a green, environmentally sensitive area. It just didn't make sense to me when we are the first town that you come to coming south on Highway 1 from a long distance and could be pretty advantageous for us to to capture some tourism and revenue by offering an opportunity for people to come into town, charge their vehicles while they run around and hopefully spend some money. The good news on this is we actually can create revenue, which is the other interesting part about this opportunity. Because we control the level of of revenue that we charge for for each of these stations. We can change it by the amount of time someone charges. So for example, we can charge one rate for the first half hour and and increase that to prevent people from hogging it during the day. In other words, we can create a queuing system. So if you're coming down the highway and you're an hour out and you want to reserve a spot at the charging station, you can do that. And that little handle won't unlock unless it's your swipe on your smartphone to unlock the charging handle. So so the bottom line is, we're actually going to create revenue doing this, both from the charging station itself as well as people coming to into town. As I've shared with people before that are unfamiliar with with electric vehicles, the the mentality of of charging your vehicle is different than a gas vehicle. In a gas vehicle, you'll run your car down to almost empty and then you'll be able to find plentiful gas stations around, generally speaking, to to fill your car. The mentality in electric vehicle owners is a little different. And I know because because my family's had one. You typically move to top off your vehicle charge so you don't get that near zero. Because if you get to near zero, there's a high potential that you're going to run out of a charge in the middle of nowhere. And then you got to get towed. So so we have an opportunity as the first potential charging station coming south of of capturing some of these folks. The next available charging station is Moro Bay and then Slope. So any rate, that's that's the thinking behind all of this. And but the issue before you here is simply to consider the the grants themselves. Again, one is 100% and the other is 50. And we would bring that back before the board. At any rate, if there's a match required, we'll have to consider if we get the match at that point, consider the the matching grant, whether to decline the grant or not. Any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Wygo, on Bridge Street, there is a charging station. Some of the hotels on Moonstone have charging stations. Tesla is talking about putting a charging station in at their expense. Why would a water and sewer company be involved in charging stations? Why?
So those are all private charging stations, not public? At a hotel?
On Bridge Street, there is a charging station you can pull up and charge.
I'm familiar with that one.
Yeah, why don't you take a ride up Bridge Street and it's right there in your face. As you go up Bridge Street, on the right side, there is a charging station.
I'll do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. But to answer my question, why would a water district, water and sewer get involved with a charging station?
Well, at the Vets Hall, which is one of the locations, we have several hundred thousand dollars in upgrades with the inability to pay, and this will be a revenue generator.
So you you're thinking of the Vets Hall property?
Correct.
Thank you.
Oh.
Dwayne, I'm sorry, I think Dwayne was next. You're muted, Dwayne.
Yes, I had a question, very similar follow up on Cheryl's is I I'm just wondering why this would be an area we would want to get into when it probably should be left to private enterprise. We're in charge of, the way I understand it, water, wastewater, parks and recreation. It doesn't seem like this is a fit for us, even though I know and I know there's going to be a continued need for this in the future. I I just am wondering at this point, if this is something that CCSD needs to get involved in. We've got a full plate, this it is.
Yeah, so one, I did run this by district council. And so we did get a thumbs up that this is within our realm of the possible. The other issue is, again, I go back to our our big issue. And this is on one of my strategic plan issues for later in the year is we have to figure out how to increase revenues to pay for some of these things we can't pay for right now. So I'm all ears on on ideas and this is just one of them.
You know, I would totally agree with that, John. I really think that some of the increased revenue things we need to be looking at as far as the Vets Hall or so on is, you know, people that use the Vets Hall need to be paying for the use of that Vets Hall. And let's look at that as well. Like I say, I just don't see where at this point, at the beginning of this industry type, in other words, we know going forward, electrical cars are going to become more and more available and widely wide used. I just don't see the utility. I think we've got a full plate. I think we need to be pursuing what we have have been doing. I think we need to be pursuing what we have been doing, you know, as far as getting our infrastructure replaced and so on. And I just don't know. Let's go after some grants that's going to replace and fix the infrastructure that we're working on now. I don't think we need to be adding anything new at this point.
Okay, thank you, Dwayne. Mary, I acknowledge you, but Marvin, I think, was just before...
Yeah, I mean, if I understand the proposal, our total liability or potential expense even without grants is what, $43,000? It seems to me that the opportunity to provide this service, as you say, attract more visitors, or visitors that might stay longer, for that amount of risk, it seems perfectly like a legitimate request. And I would look at it like providing public restrooms. You know, this is something that encourages people to come and spend time and spend money here in the community.
Mary, you had a question too?
Yeah, my comments are along that lines. I think it's a, generally, I think it's a good idea. I think it promotes, you know, the whole environmental aspect of things. I think it provides another reason to pull into town, because I've been in my car and found some very interesting towns that we had lunch in because otherwise I was going to be out of gas or out of electricity. So I think it's a good thing. I'm assuming, but maybe John can clarify this, or is that other towns and municipalities, San Luis Obispo, that they sponsor this type of thing? So I don't think, I'm assuming this is not unique, that this kind of organization would spearhead it.
Mary, you're correct. Morro Bay has it right at their Town Hall facility.
Yeah, so I generally be supportive. I think it's a good thing for the community.
Well, the agenda item was for review and discussion of the grants. So probably the next time we would be looking at this would be if we got notification that a grant was available and it would be coming back through the Finance Committee. Or I guess maybe that would just be if there was a financial aspect to it, if it was 100% grant, would it just go directly to the Board?
Honestly, it's, a grant only goes to the Board, I believe, if it's, if there's a match.
Oh, okay, so...
There may be, there may be some others. I'll have to check with Council on some other aspects. But as far as the grant goes, which is solely the reason for this item today, is just to consider the grant proposals.
So do you need action from us? I'm not clear myself.
I think it's a recommendation to the Board is in order.
Okay, that isn't what we're being called for in the agenda. We've got review and discuss.
And also, Ray D'Angelo may have some, a couple of points to add here.
Ray?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Director Seidel. So the other thing, too, that I know that it's not really mentioned in the staff report, and in my mind, is why I think this would be a good thing to pursue for us, is one of the things that puts us in good position for other grants relating to water and wastewater, it's part of the scoring, is the development of a climate action plan. And facilities like this that promote sustainable vehicles, energy conservation and the like, always puts us in good position to get grants and loans even related to water and wastewater. So I know that it wasn't stated in this, it was a larger discussion, but that's why I think that this would be a good thing for us to pursue. I know that it's, it would be something that the Board would have to approve if we do, if we do match. But from that standpoint, encouraging sustainability and other things, so.
Okay. Well, the other thing that occurs to me that as a district, it was something that we hear from the community is that they want us to be more aware of our carbon footprint and more aware of moving the district to a green environment. And the idea, for instance, of going out and purchasing an electric car or a hybrid car for the district, if that were to come up downline, would talk to, that's all well and good, but how are you going to charge the thing? So I do think that there's some benefit expressed in having this available. And if we're going to have additional revenue coming off of it, it would be interesting to know what kind of revenue is generated by other communities in establishing these kinds of, these kinds of facilities in their towns and communities. So is there anything else? I don't know that... I don't know, frankly, what action is being asked of the committee by the statement of the agenda item. I mean, we have reviewed and discussed.
I think John said that he would like to have a recommendation to the Board from the committee to pursue the grant. And I don't see that there's any particular downside to this personally. So, you know, I would like to move that we recommend to the Board that the grant proposals proceed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Marvin. Okay, moving to vote, those in favor? One, two, three. Those opposed? Two. All right, we have a recommendation. Three in favor, two opposed, to move that observation recommendation to the Board regarding the grant for electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. Okay. So any other comment on anything else? It looks like we could just move to future agenda items. Okay, and that being said, future agenda items, any recommendations?
Well, I suggested earlier, and so if it's, this is the appropriate place to capture it.
Let me tell you what I have, and you can tell me if I captured it. How's that? And then, and then we either need to extend it or not, or whatever we do. But then I also believe, Cindy, so, but any rate, I have review budget policy to include, based on how CCSD currently operates, to try to, you know, make sure we align with that. And then part of that is they review the allocation of the admin overhead, which is part of the budget policy. So that's what I captured.
And I would suggest that we put that on a calendar for September or October.
Okay, we have just shy of one minute be able to sign off, or we extend. So is there any need to extend? Nope, all right. Then I adjourn. Thank you all very, very much for your participation and effort today.
Thanks.